Are we ready? Everyone ready? Okay. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Please stand to salute the nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In attendance this evening are supervisors Fisher, Agizio, Cassiola, Fleer, and Barney. In addition, Don Januso Township Manager, Jack King Director of Planning and Assistant Township Manager, Shawn Bukavinski Chief of Police, Bill Bodorf Director of Public Works, Fire Chief Noel McMullin, Engineer Joe Seitz of Gateway Engineers, and Attorney Gretchen Moore Township Solicitor. Comments will be taken at this time for any item to be voted on by the board that appears on the agenda. General township comments or questions will be addressed before the close of the meeting. Please step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
I'm Candy Walthier, Elm Drive. I have a question. I have a question. We used to, for many, many years, we received verbal reports from the Public Works Director, the Solicitor. Sometimes Chief Bukavinski had information for the public to know about. I was wondering when we would ever start rehearing any of those again.
They provide them to us every month in written form. If it's something that we feel is important to call out, they call them out as part of that. When you, this is why we added in the new, at the beginning, discussion items. Those are kind of items that any one of our professionals want to specifically call out, but a lot of it is just reiterated, the same thing month after month, kind of working on this, working on that. But they always have the opportunity, if they feel like something is important, to list it under discussion, which is an item that needs to be talked about, but will not be voted on.
Okay, because my question about that is, is for at least the last, I'll say, three months, nobody has said anything other than the engineer about issues that are ongoing. We have no idea what our solicitor is doing, and now tonight there's a settlement agreement.
A settlement agreement for what?
For the Durbin.
That's actually not gonna be on the agenda this evening. And actually, I don't-
Still on here, though?
It is on the agenda, but it's not far enough along. It's gonna be tabled tonight. It's not far along for us to actually vote on. That's what, like, so items that she's been working on, she can't go into detail on it anyways at a public meeting because it's ongoing litigation.
Well, I understand that, but she used to give you, okay, she'd say, oh, well, I have a court date on such and such a date in this matter.
I don't ever remember specifically calling out details.
Or she sometimes would give you case law if she was, you know, talking about something, she would give you something. I personally am interested in that kind of stuff. I like to know what our solicitor is doing. I mean, I'm not asking her to tell me every little detail. I understand the nuances of the legal conflict of interest, the confidentiality, all that kind of stuff. She didn't ever give any of that. She just gave a brief synopsis of what she's doing. You guys are all well aware of what is going on. Like, Mr. Bodorf used to say, hey, we're working on Klinger Road, you know, this is what we're doing. Maybe somebody in the township would say, okay, we don't wanna bother with Klinger Road, we'll go a different way, so not as to interrupt them. Very rare, we heard about, a couple times, about the parks because Mr. Fleer brought it up, about the roofing. That's the only way we knew what they were doing over there. I don't understand why we can't give two or three little issues about what's going on in the township.
Let me speak to that real quick. We now have a website. And impact state was put on the website that may affect motor and public. Jack posted up himself.
Okay.
We didn't have that in fact.
But that's only about the motoring, that's not like what you were doing in the parks or anything like that, right?
That's correct.
Okay. On that website. Okay. Okay.
The intent of limiting it to actually active things that they're working on in discussion items or agenda items is to keep the meeting within a reasonable amount of time. If we sit here and discuss every single little thing that everybody's doing, our meeting would last till tomorrow at 7:00 a.m.
Well, our meetings never lasted till tomorrow at 7:00 a.m. when they did it before.
Candy, you and I were-
Okay, my next question, I'm moving on. I had a couple questions about Silver Creek. I noticed that you guys listed a, I don't know if you wanna call them conditions or whatever that you guys agreed to, however, there's nothing on here about the extra parking that Mr. Fleer and Mr. Cassiola discussed at the last meeting. Is that no longer gonna be optional? Their parking is gonna be down there, there's mailboxes, and that's gonna be it? There's not gonna be any additional parking for visitors?
Ask for the additional parking.
Well, I'm just asking because it's not listed on, like, the things that you guys discussed are listed on here. You guys discussed an impact fee at the last meeting. You guys discussed about the entrance road being wide and et cetera, but there's nothing on here about the additional parking. So I didn't know if that was going to be included. I'm just asking if it is.
It's not gonna be included as a condition. I will confirm, there was a verbal agreement for them to add that as part of the site plan. I don't have it in front of the site plan in front of me, and Dan isn't here. We can confirm that that is in fact included in the updated site plan.
Okay.
Yeah, she's right. If it's on the plan, the site plan or on the drawing at all, then it doesn't have to be a condition because it's already on there.
So it's on their new one that they're submitting, is that what you're saying?
We will confirm.
Okay, okay, because, all right. The other thing was, is the emergency access, is that gonna have a gate?
The emergency access at Silver Creek?
Yes.
Yes.
Who will have a key to that gate?
Yeah, it is.
Can anybody hear from Miranda?
Silver Creek, the emergency access will have a gate, correct?
Yes, I mean, it's what the township prefers, but typically there's a gate.
It's the same, Candy, as like the gate at Muse or any other gate. All of the emergency, so our police, fire, EMS, everybody, somebody in the township, Bill, will have a key to that gate, so it can be accessed by any first responder or emergency personnel that can get there.
I mean, they might need to answer this. Is there a reason why it has to be an emergency access and not an additional, just regular entrance?
Isn't it because of the slope of the-
Yeah, it's the grade of the road.
Because you're using the current driveway, do you mean where it connects?
Excuse me, excuse me, would you mind, sorry, go ahead.
Do you mean where, like, not, it's, you're already using the current driveway, so would it be the slope where it connects to the plan is the problem?
The emergency access is the current driveway, not the entrance.
Yeah.
And it's getting up onto the hill and into, having emergency access to the entrance doesn't make any sense. We need it to be interior, and you have to go up the slope, and the requirements are fifteen degrees or less, and this is the only way to get there.
Oh, okay, because my, I thought the emergency access, when you came down that driveway, was at the end of the driveway. I didn't realize you had to go up a hill.
Yeah, we go up the-
Oh, okay. That's why I didn't understand the emergency access. The other thing is, is you talked about an impact fee in your order, on the agenda. It states that the impact fee is going to be used as deemed necessary by Cecil Township for any purpose. I thought the original intent of that impact fee was if you guys needed to do something about the underpass or whatever else, it was gonna be used for that. I don't think that this should be worded as any purpose that the township deems necessary. That can be anywhere in a township.
Candy, so here's the thing, we don't wanna limit ourselves. It will be used for that area. It will be used for either the underpass or the intersection of Rising and 50, but if, you know as well as I do, that if we put very specific language in, then we're tied to what that says. And what if we find out a year into the construction of the project that, oh shoot, something we didn't even think about is a way bigger problem than what we anticipated? So by saying any purpose, we're saying, hey, we're gonna rely on our professionals, Bill, our engineers, Gretchen, to determine what the best use of those funds are.
Okay.
Excuse me, that was actually Miranda's name.
Yeah.
Miranda, Miranda said that the township could use it for any purpose they chose.
And we're grateful. Yeah, we're grateful, and it's not gonna be used for, we're not gonna use it for Lawrence or over on the Peter side of the township. It will be used for something in that general area, but we don't wanna tie ourselves to one specific thing right now.
Okay. I was just wondering, because that was what was discussed, was about the underpass area. The next question I have is about the fire code amendments. Is there any reason why this is coming up now?
There's actually a lot of reasons.
Get rid of section 107 and 103.4?
There's actually a lot of reasons those are coming up. They've been issues in, as we said, when we repealed the International Fire Code before, we've had issues with specific things, and we want the ability to be able to bend when we need to or make adjustments when we need to, and we found these to be problems in the past. And we can't, when we get to that actual line item, we can let MAC address that in a little bit more detail, but there's, we didn't just wake up one day and decide to do it.
So at some point, you've repealed the IFC?
Oh, yeah, we did it in June. We announced the intent to repeal and replace.
You announced the intent.
Right, right, right. Announce the intent to repeal and replace. So we're adjusting-
You mean that, when you say repeal and replace, do you mean repeal and replace the whole thing or repeal and replace certain parts of it?
Sections that we feel, yeah, and we asked the board at that meeting, when we announced the intent to repeal and replace, to talk with MAC about things that they've had issues with. Issues with, MAC has talked to Dawn and Jack and various members and Bill to find out what we've had issues with and Liz, to see what needed to be adjusted. When we initially adopted it, we adopted the whole thing in its entirety without really understanding what every line item of the code meant.
So then, the reason that we've never adopted the newest addition is-
We're currently 2015.
Yeah, which is a little old. It's, there's been several additions since.
It actually, like Cecil and other local municipalities are just now in the process of looking into, like, 2018. So it's not uncommon, you know?
To operate one, under one that's seven years old, when there's two other additions out ahead of it.
Not uncommon.
Okay.
Candy, if I could just add something that Cindy was kinda mentioning. You know, the IFC code is extremely valuable, but it's also, it's very detailed.
I know, I read the first thirty chapters today.
Did you say you read the first thirty chapters?
Yeah. I read through. I have a lot of-
You understand though?
No, I don't.
Yeah.
But I'm not an attorney, so I wouldn't expect to, and I'm not a firefighter, so I wouldn't expect to.
A lot of it is up for interpretation. You have three people reading, and three different views on what that particular section says. So, just to sum this up, you know, we're not just throwing the code out. We're not just throwing the code out, we're just simply doing what's best for our community, we believe, and that's kinda leaving it up to the board, to the fire chief, to the police chief, whatever, the EMS folks, you know, so. We're not just throwing it out the window, we're trying to go at it, you know, a common sense approach to what's gonna help our community grow. It's not, it's not necessarily a bad thing, I mean-
Well, no, it's not. My only question was, was this section is for, to have, in my understanding of, and I'm not, you know, a genius at reading that, this section refers to having two access points into a-
Not two access points.
Firefighter, it says firefighter, it's approved firefighter apparatus roads, access roads is in the code.
The way that the code reads is that it's two full entrances and two exits. That's not, the topography in Cecil Township does not always allow for that, which gives us the ability to kinda do what we did at Silver Creek, where we're having one primary entrance in, for cars, and then one emergency entrance for emergency personnel. We did it at Muse, we did it at Silver Creek, we've done it a bunch of other areas, but it gives us the flexibility when necessary to make those changes. We've had plans not come to fruition, not just residential plans, but, but commercial developments, not be able to go into locations that would be great for the township because of that. So we want the ability to flex. We're not saying we're never gonna do it. We will do it as often as possible.
Also, the entrance is three lanes and wide.
Yeah, your main entrance is, but what I was referring to is what it said in the IFC, and that's what my question was, the part that you're getting rid of.
We're not getting rid of it. We're pulling it out and giving ourselves the flexibility to, to determine what fits best for our township.
Okay.
Wait, I'd like to add this also, that if the fire code requires it, then we have to, and it's a part of our ordinance, and we have to enforce it. Where if we take it out, we can still enforce it if our township engineer is convinced that they can put a second full driveway access or just an emergency access, and we can require it as a condition. So, if, like, we ran into the problem on Cool Valley there, that it's a cliff on both sides, if you've ever driven through that. Our engineer was lucky that the developer and they were able to come up with a place where they can squeeze an emergency access up through there, which, you know, gated, but we're happy that they were able to find something up that cliffside. You know, it wouldn't be good for a, just a day-to-day, everyday traffic access, but it will be in case there's a blockage or something at their main entrance, then at least they have a way to get out. All the residents can get out that way, or EMS can get in that way.
But to Tom's point, Candy, you don't wanna throw away the whole Cool Valley development, which has big potential for the township, just because it's not possible because of topography to have a full second entrance and exit.
Okay, I'm just saying, I didn't see anything that said a full second entrance when I read it. So maybe I'm reading a different version, could possibly be.
Maybe because you read thirty chapters in one day.
No, I made sure that I read this one three times, so I understood it. The other one is about the cul-de-sacs. Why are we, are we doing the same thing with that, where-
It's the same-
Are currently like ninety-six whatever feet for the trucks to turn around in, if it's a hundred and fifty feet long? Are we still gonna do that if we deem it necessary, just not?
If it's possible, yes, but like, what if, when it's, to Tom's point, if it's in the code written that way, then we're stuck to that word for word. What if they can get a cul-de-sac that's ninety-four and a half feet, but the code says ninety, the International Fire Code says ninety-six? We can't deviate from whatever that code says without it. We're gonna get as big cul-de, as big of cul-de-sacs, sorry, I had, as we possibly can, but we're, but we don't wanna limit ourselves to a certain set number because if we can get this close, we don't wanna throw away a whole section for nothing.
I understand that. I just didn't understand that if you took it out and you quote repealed it, that you were gonna be able to have the ability to come back in later and say, we can still do this.
Yeah, there's nothing, yeah.
Okay, I just figured, once you took it out, that they could come in and say, we don't have to adhere to it, no matter what that code says.
Nope, not at all.
Okay.
This code works perfectly in Kansas and Iowa, unless it goes up flat.
Yeah. Right.
Okay. That's all I had, thank you.
Thanks. Any other citizens' comments?
I missed it.
Hang, hang on one second, he was coming to the podium, and then I'll just, I would ask that you come to the-
Hello, Al DeSalo from 175 North DePauli, and I have a question about the Silver Lane project also. In here, the wording is that you have the evergreen buffer on the developed side or the adjacent side. I wanna see if you can remove that statement and just put it on the developed side. And you are maintaining a fifty-foot buffer zone, correct?
Yes.
Why, why do you want it to not say adjacent property side?
Because if they try to put it on my side, that means they're gonna come in and destroy the buffer zone to plant those trees.
Well, they can't come onto your property without your written-
But I mean, you'd go through the buffer zone to plant it, and then you would tear those trees down and everything. I'm trying to maintain that buffer zone, all the trees that are there. Okay, that's what I wanted to know, there's just, if it would be-
Afraid that if we take out that wording, that you're not gonna get them where you want? Maybe we clarify it and say, developers shall provide evergreen buffering along the development side or adjacent side of the property without disturbing the buffer zone or something along that line, like I-
And here's, here's my other issue with that, is if they would happen to put it on my side, okay? The people that move in there are gonna encroach on that buffer zone as far as they possibly can, but if you have the tree line there already, they won't do that. This gives the wildlife that are there now somewhere to stay.
I, so, personal experience, but I disagree. So I'll give you an example in my yard. There's a, in my backyard is the wood, what my kids call the woods. It's that buffer zone that sits behind my house. We didn't touch the tree line, neither did our neighbors next door, but the three houses next door to that completely came in and took out the tree. But they took out, took it out because it was what you would, what you view as undisturbed woods. I think if we have them plant trees along, and we could even post it if we need to, to make sure that the people that live in that area understand that that's the buffer zone. But I want sort of like a definite line that people know that they can't cross.
Right, that's what I'm looking for.
Yeah, so-
And it is a fifty-foot buffer zone all the way, correct?
Yes, around the-
I know that one point it was fifty to twenty-five in one point.
I don't have the plan in front of me. I wanna say it's twenty-five.
It's a fifty-foot buffer that is gonna be-
Property line to property line.
Yeah, it's the property of the homeowners. Association documents, it says that stays open space.
That's what I'm looking for.
Are we good then?
Yeah, I'm good, thank you. I do have one other question, this may sound stupid, I'm not even sure if I asked this to- Who do we have to talk to to get a stop sign installed on Morganza and Cecil Henderson?
That nice guy right in the middle.
Okay.
Phil, raise your hand.
That's all, I'll talk to him.
If you, I'll give, I have your contact information. I will talk to Bill and Dawn, and we will reach back out to you to see if we can- Wait, what did he say?
Is it a state road?
State road.
Actually, a request has to be made to the state via the township, on behalf of the township.
From Bill and Dawn.
Okay.
What's the intersection, Ginnell?
It's Cecil Henderson and Morganza, coming down Morganza Road, because it's, when you come in, it's, you gotta really turn your head around to look, and they fly down that hill.
Right, but the request has to come from us, which is why talking to these two nice gentlemen will be who you wanna talk to.
Thanks.
Thank you. Um, and, go ahead, sorry. I'm sorry. We can bring the microphone to you.
Dale Delugus, forty thirty-nine, Sir James Drive, in Windsor, Winsler Woods. I've been here politicking for Windsor Woods, North DePauli Road situation for quite a while. And just as a follow-up to the young lady's earlier discussion about the emergency access to Silver Creek. I haven't been able to find the emergency access to Windsor Woods, and I was wondering where we go in that situation.
There is not an emergency access at Windsor Woods. There is not one.
And why is that?
Because the board at the time that that was approved didn't require it as part of the development.
So it's not required by that code that we were discussing?
At the time Windsor Woods was approved, the International Fire Code hadn't been adopted.
I thought they said that was 2015?
That's the date that that code was, that specific code was written. We adopted it in 2018, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, so we adopted, maybe twenty seventeen? Yeah, we adopted the 2015 code after it was already written, so we didn't adopt it.
Dawn just said twenty sixteen, I think Windsor Woods.
He said twenty eighteen. I don't remember, I don't remember what year we adopted it, but it was after 2015, and it was after Windsor Woods had already been approved as a plan. So we could, we can't, Windsor Woods, the developer of Windsor Woods was already grandfathered in to the plan that was approved. We can't then, after we adopted the International Fire Code, go back and say, whoops, well now you have to, because the plan's already been approved by the board.
So this, this board doesn't think it's a problem, then?
No, this board does, and this board, for the past, I'd say, four or five years, every plan that's come through has, we've required an emergency access.
Understood, understood.
Which is why we're requiring it at Silver Creek, we're requiring it at Cool Valley, we're requiring it, but the board at the time that that was approved didn't require it, unfortunately.
Very unfortunately. There's a lot of homes up there, a lot of people up there. If anything happens with the intersection there of North Apollo and King Edward Drive, we got no way out of there.
Right, which is why we require them going forward.
Okay, I still see it as a problem.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Before we get on to the agenda, I wanna take a quick second to recognize Randy Roberts. This is his forty-third year with the township as a foreman, and he's been amazing. So while he isn't here this evening, I still think he deserves the opportunity to be recognized because forty-three years is a phenomenal career here. Also briefly, take a second, I'm gonna give you some friendly advice. Take a second and take a walk through Cecil Park. Our Public Works guys have been super hard at work down there, getting things ready for the Fall Festival, and have done an absolutely phenomenal job on the concession stand down there. It looks, I mean, better than it ever has. So Mark, Bill, thank you, looks awesome. They're currently working on the stage at Supervisor Agizio's request, and that will be done, fingers crossed, for- Yeah, we're getting there, so it's, it's looking very, uh, nice. Yeah, they really do. We have- Yep, we have the best Public Works guys. Yep, thank you, thank you, thank you to everyone.
Cindy, can I just tell you that, according to your website, you were not the upper in the county.
Okay. I'm, I'm not gonna, I didn't remember. I can remember a lot, but I didn't remember that. Moving on to announcements, the Cecil Township Board of Supervisors will hold a workshop session to consider the comprehensive plan on Monday, September 12th, at 7:00 p.m. in the meeting room in the municipal building. Don't forget to go to Bingo at the Volunteer Fire Company on September 18th, admission is five dollars. The car cruise that was originally scheduled for mid-August had to be delayed because of bad weather. It is now scheduled for September 18th. It's always a fun time, my kids love to go, so go check that out. The Cecil Township Historical Society will hold their monthly meeting on September 21st at 7:00 p.m. Don't forget about the upcoming Fall Festival. It's Saturday, September 24th from 11:00 to dusk, and Sunday, September 25th to 10:00 a.m. to dusk. Jack, isn't that opening ceremonies at 10:00 on that Saturday, or is it at 11:00?
Opening ceremony is at 11:00 on Saturday. Opens 10:00 on Sunday.
Okay. Last year was absolutely phenomenal. Our Parks and Rec Board did an amazing job, so please come to check it out again and support the township. And then there's a list of dates that Jordan Tech Service will be at the municipal building for collection of school taxes. Discussion items, these are items that will be discussed by the board that will not be voted on this evening. The first discussion item is discuss additional work to Burnside Road, Muse Bishop improvements being conducted by the McConnell's Trail Development. Joe?
Thank you, Cindy. Once we, when the McConnell Trails development was approved, there was proposed work to be done at the intersection of Muse Bishop and Burnside Road. It was to increase the turning radius so that when a vehicle was coming and making a right-hand turn onto Muse, from Muse Bishop onto Burnside, they'd have more room to swing around there and not drag bottom. And once we got, the contractor got out there and laid the slope back, and we had some meetings out there, Bill was out there, Frank was out there, we looked at the grade of Burnside Road. It's a little hard to see, but I put the profile up there. Right at the intersection of Burnside and Muse Bishop, the grade is fifteen percent. And I think there was an incident on Friday in which a box truck got stuck trying to make the turn off of Muse Bishop onto Burnside Road. So we got a meeting out there about three, four weeks ago. The developer, Andy Hutchinson, was there, his designer, and we talked about the possibility of lowering the slope for the vertical clearance on Burnside Road. So the developer hired Gateway to complete the evaluation. We were able to use prior survey information from his surveyor, and we were able to lay out a vertical curve here that shows an eight percent grade coming right off of Muse Bishop Road. Cutting the knob off of there, lowering it down to thirteen percent, and then transitioning back into the top, about fifty feet down from the intersecting street at the, at the bend that takes you back to the private road. So, you know, in looking at this in the interest of trying to move this project along- So, you know, in looking at this in the interest of trying to, uh, move this project along, um, the developer had already committed funds to make improvements to McConnell Road. Uh, McConnell Road has really stood up really good during the construction. Uh, Dan's looked at it, I've looked at it. And, uh, it might be a better idea to take some of that funding and switch it from that improvement over to Burnside Road and make this improvement so that we'd have a lesser slope on it, be safer, uh, for vehicles making the turn off of Muse Bishop on to Burnside Road. Uh, the value, it's, it's pretty much a, a trade-off when it comes to the value. Uh, I shared my quantities with the developer. He's currently in the process of getting prices from his contractors to complete the work. So.
I don't think McConnell's Road held up that great. It's because our guys kept patching it.
Okay.
And I, I, I don't want to see take that away. And Burnside Road, all you just did was move that intersection to the left.
Well, that was.
You needed to take some off the inside on the right.
We're, we're taking it off the inside at the, at the slope, Ron. It's, it's gonna, it's gonna shift over to have a more of a curve there. But this, this profile here is to lower the grade so the vehicles can negotiate coming around there without any difficulty, with less difficulty and get the vehicle off of Muse Bishop and on to Burnside out of the traffic.
But I thought part of the developer's deal was he, he was going to repave McConnell Road and do this. Improve the intersection.
I'm not, I'm not familiar with all the, the fine details of the developer's agreement, maybe.
Is that what it was, Bill?
Yeah, I'm, I'm here to answer any questions. So, um, Cindy, similar to what you said previously, this was a previous board. So when we were negotiating or having a conversation about our PRD approval, there were certain things that were requested when we talked about doing things off-site. One was the intersection at McConnell Road, which we did. Number two was Burnside, which we're looking at. And number three was milling and then just resurfacing McConnell Road. That's the only part of our agreement. What we discussed is, we discussed this, I mean, this is going back five, six years. We discussed, do we want to cut one out? Do we want to expand the scope? And the, at that point, the answer was no. And we're doing all three. So this is a dramatic increase in the scope of work that we're looking at for improvement number two. So that's where the discussion came up, is that do we want to put the funds towards that? We ran every kind of cost analysis for realigning that road and it was just cost prohibitive. That's how we ended up with the repair that was approved.
Joe, my, my question is though, um, you said it's a trade-off. I mean, a- all the work on McConnell, it pulls all that money off of McConnell to do this, to pu- put this new grade in here, to lower that grade. So you're saying that it takes all the money away from McConnell?
Bill, were they supposed to be stormwater management and that? Stormwater management and that on McConnell Road?
Not that, no, not that on the road, no. Not on McConnell Road. No, there was, there was a stormwater, a stormwater infrastructure plan.
But they, they agreed to, to add that third lane, which they've cut out already and laid it slow back. But I know that on, on the profile here, I know that was never part of the discussion at the time, so that, I know that wouldn't be on them.
Right.
But the only thing that we have to look at is the extra cost is to cut this road down now, the existing part and, and change the profile. So I mean, you're saying just changing that profile is going to take all the, the, the improvements we were going to get on McConnell?
Tom, you're acting like though there's a sign, I mean, there are significant funds, but it's also going to be super expensive to change the profile. It's not going to be a minor.
Well, ma- maybe my choice of words is, is not correct. Tom, maybe it's, it's, I should say, taking some of the funding from McConnell and applying it over here to Burnside would be more appropriate. I know, I know what I said.
But to understand though, Tom, we, i- it's going to take a chunk of it. Like, it's going to take a significant chunk of the improvements from McConnell's to make this repair.
I mean, part of, part of the improvement that we're talking about is expanding the area another hundred feet so that we can trans- transition that, and that's a full removal of the road and replacement.
Right. Tom, I just want to make sure you understand though, it's not some, like, some to me is a small amount. Like, this is going to be a big chunk of the funding that was supposed to go to McConnell that's now going to be done to, a- and it needs to be done. Like, I, I agree that it needs to be done, but I just want to make sure you're not, a couple of years from now, saying, wait a second, why didn't this happen at McConnell?
I didn't ask him a couple of years, I'm asking now. He says he'll get us those quantities. The question was answered.
And, and, and keep in mind, this, you look at the profile, we're only talking about two hundred fifty feet from the intersection of Muse Bishop up to the next intersection, so we're not talking an extended length of roadway.
Right. Any other questions? Thank you, Andy.
Okay.
Um, number two, discuss the request of Hope Learning Center to occupy space as a school in the SD District.
Okay. What we have is this request for a, a, a school called the Hope Learning Center that would like to occupy the former Stealth Building at three thirty-three Technology Building, uh, Drive. Uh, a school is not a use by right in the SD commercial land use category. Uh, we've had other schools that are in the SD, uh, zoning district in the township. And, uh, there's also been requests in the past from previous boards to permit a school in this, uh, category. So it's, it's your position, it's up to you to decide whether or not you want to permit a school to occupy space in the SD commercial land use.
Yeah, Cal was approved to go in there. Um, Waynesburg University was approved to go in there. It was on the same process that someone came along. I guess when South Point, uh, permitted use was first, uh, listed, nobody thought of, anybody was going to ask for a school in industrial park. But so far, a couple of people have asked and they've, they've been a good, it's been a good response. It's no- nothing detrimental to have this, when Waynesburg was there and or Cal. So I don't see anything wrong with this either.
I don't e- I, I don't either because number one, uh, that Stealth Building is really empty. There's a lot of room up there and why can't they utilize, uh, some of the space in that particular building with this Hope Learning Center?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it. If the board doesn't have a problem with it, then we can, can move forward. I don't think it's an agenda item.
Yeah, it's on the agenda.
On the agenda.
It's on it, yes.
Right.
Oh, there it is, one seventy-seven. So then when we get to that, we can, we can grant the permission to it for it to be allowed. Okay. Thank you. Moving on to resolutions. One seventy-one, twenty twenty-two, consider application twenty twenty-two oh oh twenty-six for the Lewis PA Turnpike Lot Line Revision, Location two oh one County Line Road, R one Low Density Residential Zoning District, applicant PA Turnpike Commission. The Planning Commission review, reviewed this application on August eighteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, I can bring it up. There, here's the, the plan that shows that the subdev- subdivision of the, uh, piece of parcel from a turnpike and conveying it to the adjacent property owner. Um, they represented from the Turnpike Commission at the Planning Commission meeting that indicated there was an error in, uh, the land when there was the subdivision to build the, uh, the turnpike. So this is just a conveyance of property back to that property owner, uh, that they had requested.
Well, he also said that the Turnpike owns it, but it's excess property that they don't need and there was a settlement with, uh, Mr. Lewis.
Correct.
Family on that.
Yes.
Yeah, I've been out there several times and they've actually given them the property.
Okay.
It was a matter of waiting on the township to sign something, a deed or something. I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero. One seventy-two, twenty twenty-two, consider application twenty twenty-two oh oh twenty-two for the McConnell's Trails Phase three B subdivision plan, location McConnell's Trails, Planned Residential Development, R two Medium Density Residential Zoning District, applicant McConnell's Trails. The Planning Commission reviewed this application on July twenty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Good evening, grant showering with the developer representing McConnell, McConnell Trails LLC. Um, this is the request for final approval of the last phase of McConnell Trails, which is three B. On the screen before you is the approved PRD. The section, uh, where three B is located is here. It is comprised of thirty-three single-family lots that are sixty-two feet wide, um, as well as open space and then a stormwater management facility. Um, this road does connect down to Burnside. That's a connection to Burnside that's occurring during three B. Uh, we did receive a comment letter from Gateway Engineers, um, and we believe that we have addressed all of those comments. We have submitted revised plans, um, uh, with the updates that were necessary. Uh, there was one additional item that we will update on the plans, which there is a manhole located, um, on the low side of the stormwater pond. We are going to, um, convert that to an open grate manhole and then also install a berm there. Um, there was a question about overflow of the stormwater management facility. Uh, we ran an additional analysis that if there was a hundred-year storm and the outlet structure, um, was clogged, um, to make sure that it had a path, um, to go. So what we came, we ran an analysis where in that instance, um, it would be collected by the berm that we are going to install and go into the open grate manhole that's already proposed below that facility. So with that, if there's any questions?
Yeah, what about the houses that were getting flooded down below?
That's what the analysis was prepared for. Uh, we went out, we walked the site, um, and looked at the path of water and where it would go. Um, in a hundred-year storm event, which that facility is designed to control.
No, I'm talking about that have already flooded. Mr. Masco's house, the house tombeled, our driveway's been washed out several times.
That I'm not aware of.
Pardon me?
I am not aware of that.
I'm sure Andy's aware of it.
This, this wouldn't be impacted by the Masco's house. We, I've met with the Masco's several times, uh, the last time about a week ago. They're, they've had no issues since we've, uh, filled the area and are directing all the water to the pond. And we've handled their driveway and gone above and beyond to make sure that everything's rectified.
If we have an issue with the Masco's, then we need to have Gretchen and, uh, Dan address it with Andy. That's unrelated to this section of the plan. So we have to be careful not to tie them together. Do I have a motion to approve this? Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No.
Oh. Three, two. One seventy-three, twenty twenty-two, consider setting the date for a public hearing regarding conditional use application twenty twenty-two oh oh twenty-seven for the Cool Valley Illustrative Site Plan, Location Lewiki Road, C one General Commercial BPD Business Park Plan Development and IHPD Interstate Highway Plan Development Zoning District, applicant TNR Properties. The Planning Commission reviewed this application on August eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. At the request of the applicant, we're looking at September nineteenth at seven PM. Does that work for this board? That night will also be, not only will it be, we have to make sure we advertise it correctly because not only will it be a conditional use application, but it will also be a special voting meeting. We're going to vote on it immediately following the meeting because the applicant's under, um, time constraints.
When's that meeting set for?
September nineteenth. Does that work? At seven? Does that work? Okay.
That's what? That's what, because of advertising?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why. Right, that's why we did that.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, moving on to one seventy-four, twenty twenty-two, consider application for payment number six for the work completed to date for the Cecil Township Public. Oh, wait, is that the one? Hold on. Nope, we're good. Uh, Cecil Township Public Works Facility Early Site Package Project in the amount of sixty-seven thousand nine hundred forty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents by Stewart Contracting, Inc., including change orders one and two.
I, I put the letter up there. You know, all the work's been completed and then payment's recommended.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Darlene, did you say yes? Darlene? Darlene? Um, you said no?
No.
Okay. Four, one. One seventy-five, twenty twenty-two, consider the final release of financial security for one thirty Technology Drive in the amount of twenty-two thousand nine hundred twenty dollars and thirty-seven cents as recommended by the Township Engineer.
We, we completed a final inspection of the site, uh, based on their request and all the items have been addressed. So, uh, recommendation is in order.
Is there a second? I'll second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five zero. One seventy-six, twenty twenty-two, consider application for payment number one and final for Russell Standard for twenty twenty-two Payment Maintenance Contract A Project in the amount of two hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars. Joe?
It should be, excuse me, it should be twenty-two thou- two hundred twenty-eight thousand two hundred dollars. Yes, this is the, uh, payment one and final for the work that was completed on South Point Boulevard from Morganza Road to North Technology Drive. This was the fiber reinforced seal coat, uh, process. Uh, all the work's been completed. We had no issues and, uh, we recommend payment.
Joe, um, did we have a budget of like three hundred eighty-three thousand dollars?
I believe we did. Yeah, I believe we did have a higher budget.
Just, did we shorten up the length of it or just?
No, it just, when, their, their bid came in better than their budget number they were giving me for unit prices at the time, so it, it worked out to our advantage.
Okay, then we have a surplus.
Yeah.
Right.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero. One seventy-seven, twenty twenty-two, consider the request of Hope, of the Hope Learning Center to allow for the use of a school in the SD Dist- District in the Stealth Building at three 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 Technology Drive. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Five zero. One seventy-eight, twenty twenty-two, consider the award of the general contract for the Public Works Building to, is it UHL or Yule?
Yule.
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 Construction company in the amount not to exceed four million seven hundred ninety-one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, pending review of the Township Solicitor.
Um, well, good evening, everybody. Just to, to kind of reiterate on the letter, um, that we provided, uh, Friday. So bids were, um, accepted on June ninth, um, for this project. We've, we've worked with Yule to look and, and the, uh, the township to look at some value engineering options. Um, and also some reduction in scope. If you read through the letter that we provided on Friday, that kind of lists out all of those items. Um, what we've looked at in the market, we don't see pricing coming down anytime soon. It seems to be relatively flat at this point. Um, Yule, we know is, is a good contractor. We've worked with them before and it's, and it's our recommendation to make award to Yule.
So the public understands the bid came in higher than we expected. Um, so when he's saying value engineering, he, uh, Ron and to, Tom Cassiolis sat down uh, with our engineers and kind of worked through some changes that could be made to the building to reduce the cost. Um, and that's what that new number is that's here. It's more affordable to us while still allowing our Public Works guys who are in desperate need of a new building to get that building that they desperately need. Um, and we met with them when? Friday? When did we meet at the site?
Friday.
Friday, thank you.
Friday at Klinger, yes.
Yeah, I, sorry, I couldn't. Um, Supervisor Barney, Supervisor Fleer, myself met with Gateway Engineers and Mike Stewart up at the site to kind of walk through what's going on up there currently on Friday. Um, and to have any of our questions answered, just to make sure that we're moving forward in the best way possible. I think it was a very good meeting. Um, I think it answered a lot of questions that some of the supervisors had. And hopefully you feel confident moving forward. Any questions for?
How much difference is it from the original bid?
It is just shy, including, so this does include a ward of ad alternate one, which was the additional square footage from the building. which was the additional square footage from the building. So it is, I believe, just shy of nine hundred thousand less than what their bid was.
So the change prior to ad alternate one was a million dollars change, and then we added the square footage back to the building, which then changed it to nine hundred thousand approximately, correct?
Sorry, could you say that again?
So the original value engineering came in at about a million dollars worth of changes, and then we added back square footage, which then added approximately a hundred thousand dollars back to the cost of the project, which brought, the change, the value engineering changed to nine hundred thousand, yes.
So the, the memo that we had, was that about a month ago?
Give it to me.
That had the million.
Yeah.
And, and this letter kind of hits on that a little bit. That was for the overall project. So we still do have a plumbing contract, a mechanical, an electrical, and a fire protection contract to bid. So some of those items, such as, one of them is the, is elimination of the restroom that's in, that was in the storage garage. So in terms of the general contractor, his overall cost on that is fairly low, whereas we've got some savings coming when we did the estimates on the plumbing side of things. So that's where that, the million that changed to nine hundred is. There's still savings from those estimates on the MEP with this reduced scope as well.
Is it still going to be fifty-two weeks?
The last I had heard a couple of weeks ago, it's come down a little bit from that. Not drastically, but it, I thought it was in the thirties.
And just to clarify, there is no square footage reductions for that in the value engineering. We didn't cut the size, cut some height down and other things.
Correct, yeah. It, it's the, it's the, the base bid that we bid, and then also the ad alternate that's that additional square footage on the storage garage.
Correct.
Okay, now, the other problem is that I still uncomfortable with is the site is complicated due to the, whatever you want to call it. Coal blossom, soakstone, fool's gold, pyrite. What are we going to, I mean, how are we going to make the residents on Klinger Road be very comfortable with this situation to being that it was opened up and the, the site was opened up to the oxygen and so on and so forth as far as getting wet, arsenic, and everything else that can come from the pyrite, fool's gold, coal blossom, soakstone, whatever you want to call it.
Yeah, so we, we talked about this on Friday of last week when we met on site. I just want to be very clear that the pyridic material is not an environmental hazard. It's not a health hazard. This site was, with being over an acre disturbance, we were required to get MPDS permits. So there was an elevator review through the Conservation District and the DEP. If there were any health concerns at that point, those would have been elevated, and those would have been dealt with at that time. The issue with pyridic material is it's expansive. So, you know, everyone thinks that this is a junk site because of pyridic, because of, anytime expansive material gets wet, it rusts and it expands. So we can't build foundations right off of that. What, what we did in the initial bid and design was we clay capped it. So essentially what we're doing is we're sealing all of the pyridic material that's going to be exposed with about a twelve-inch layer of clay, which is impermeable, which will keep the moisture out of the pyridic. Again, it's not a health hazard at all, and I'll be very clear about that. It's more of a construction issue that, you know.
Okay, so how long has that been open and exposed? Being that pyrite can ta, can contaminate the groundwater along with other toxic metals such as arsenic, a poisonous element. Coal veins often contain pyrite and arsenic. And if that's water hitting that, and it's, and we got springs up there on that site, and they're not, they're not just wet water springs, they're springs that run constantly. How do we know that this is definitely not, you know, water does find its way through a lot of?
That's true. Uh, one of the general construction practices that we find when we encounter a spring is we put spring drains in. Change order one reflects that, where we hit a spring, we redirected that into an underdrain that got directed around our site. The last thing we want is any moisture where our foundations are going to go. So that is something that, you know, we've have inspectors on site making sure that they are capping that as it, as it's exposed. I do want to say, I just want to, again, I want to be very clear that the DEP does not find pyridic material as a contaminated health hazard.
Can I, can we also clarify, because she's, she's fixing, she's saying thing on Friday. Just because pyrite was found doesn't mean that arsenic or other heavy metals were found, correct? We did core sampling, they found pyrite. Pyrite is expansive, which means you shouldn't build on it. It doesn't mean that it leaks into the groundwater or gets into the air and contaminates the air. It just means if you put concrete on it and it expands, the concrete's going to crack, which you don't want to spend money building, putting concrete on and having it crack. So we're, we're handling that. But I think you're reading from something that you got off the internet or Googled, and you already explained to the?
I'm also reading off of what Dan Deseroff said. Site is complicated, complicated due to pyrite material, which expands when exposed to air and water. This was understood when the project was designed and bid unit price items and including the bid to address the complications. But why?
I just want to say that the?
Why didn't we know that?
Hold on a second. We, we understand that. There's pyrite there. There's no question there's pyrite there and that we need to handle it. But you're also rolling in and saying arsenic, other heavy metals, blah, blah. I don't want people to, to hear that and leave the meeting and think that we're ignoring other heavy metals or that there's potential groundwater. Mike was very clear about that on the meeting on Friday. I want to be very clear about it in the public today. I also, I'm going to bite my tongue for a second. I was going to say something, but I'm going to bite my tongue and keep it to myself. But I, I don't want you, you to set a public outcry that there's some sort of environment, huge environmental hazard there. There isn't. There's pyrite there. We know about it.
There's a coal stream.
We're addressing it. It's not in any way dangerous to the residents in that area or to the public works employees that will be there.
And just so everybody knows, that they are undercutting the building six foot. They're undercutting the whole parking lot a foot. They're going to put clay on it, and then, what did we figure, six, eight inches of millings?
Yeah, about six inches of millings.
Yeah.
And we're also going to?
And there's, there's pyrite pretty much anywhere you dig around Pennsylvania.
Yeah, pyrite is a very common material. I, I, I just want to elaborate. When Dan wrote his letter about complications, it was more so just to make everyone aware that we're not going to have any surprises whenever we bid this out for the high construction costs. That's where the complications arise.
Okay.
I would question your clay and six, eight inches of millings.
You would question?
The millings is more so just to keep the site stable over the winter. And, and those millings are actually from Public Works' stockpile. So that was something we talked about on Friday, just to keep the site clean until the next contractor comes in and, and we open the site back up.
I just don't feel it's a stable base to build on.
Millings?
Millings with clay underneath it.
That's not what they're, they're just doing that, correct? It's not just to build on, it's to keep it clean.
In, in the parking areas, he said it would be clay with eight inches of millings.
Yeah, I mean, the contractor's still going to have to meet compaction requirements whenever they come to pave, so.
The clay is just so we're not dragging mud in there. I mean, the milling, someone might drag mud out on the road all the time.
Clay has a tendency to work its way up to the surface, though. Do what you want.
Any other questions by the board?
Would you rather see it? Two, eh?
Is there a motion on one seventy-eight to award the contract for the public works building?
I'll make a motion.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 No.
No.
Three, two. One seventy-nine, twenty twenty-two. Consider the award of contract two site utilities for a public works facility in the amount of one hundred seven thousand six hundred ten dollars to J. Stewart Excavating LLC pending review of the township solicitor.
I think we need to table this.
Okay, why?
Because we just are about doing the sub, subdividing.
I know, we had an adjustment. Thank you.
Do you have any idea what it is doing?
We can, we can award it, I don't want to table it for a whole month. We can award it pending the review by Gretchen, and she'll look into the subdivision issue.
Joe, do you find anything else? Yeah, Ronnie had asked before the meeting, you know, why we were subdividing it. And I reached out to Dan here, and the reason that the subdivision has to occur, it's part of the PUC tariff rules in order for them to fund the project. And the water line is supposed to go to the center of the, the property where the building is located. So by doing that, it limits the frontage of the property along the road, and it makes it a better situation for them to contribute more to the project. So we don't need the entire property to be at one parcel. You're creating a parcel for the building to stand on alone by itself, even though you will retain ownership of everything, and that's per the PUC rules. And obviously, the water company's going to pay for all the water line installation and save the township eight, about eighty thousand dollars.
So we don't need to award their contract?
We won't, you're not awarding the water line, you're going to award the sanitary sewer.
Go ahead. Just real quick, so this is contract two for phase two. This is the, the extension of the utilities. So the base bid was bringing the sanitary sewer to the site. There was an ad alternate that was for the water line. So based on this new information that we have on Friday, with PA American taking care of putting in the water line, the recommendation is now just to award the base bid, which is for the sanitary sewer extension to the site.
Okay.
And that's the, the hundred and seven thousand six hundred and ten dollars.
Yeah, originally, when we were paying for it, the water company originally normally wants you to run a main water line extension to the center of your, the parcel. And the parcel was sixty-six acres, and it would have run all, all along Klinger Road for an area where we didn't need. So they says if, if the, if it was parceled off for just the building we wanted, they're going to come into the center of that, the new parcel we're creating. And it'd be about five or six acres around that, I assume. Around the public works, we still own the rest of it, but it's just, it's going to be two or three parcels there on, on the same tract. And that, that way the water company is willing to do it. And like Joe said, it's saving us eighty thousand dollars that we originally anticipated would have to pay for the water line extension.
Makes sense. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a, moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Passes four, one. One eighty, twenty twenty-two. Consider application twenty twenty-two, oh oh one seven for the Silver Creek Plan Residential Development on the following five conditions. One, developer shall contribute an impact fee of one thousand seven hundred dollars per developed lot payable at the time of the application for the building permit. The impact fee may be used as deemed necessary by Cecil Township for any purpose. Two, developer shall provide evergreen buffering along the development side or the adjacent property side as decided in the field to protect adjoining properties along DePauli Road, along lots two seventy-one and two eighty-eight. Just to be clear for the record, that does not, that's in addition to the buffer. That's not included in the buffer. Three, culvert to install crossing over the creek shall be a conspan structure reinforced concrete as approved by the township engineer. Four, entrance road shall be widened to three lanes. Five, emergency access shall be installed.
I do have to make a comment. I think Joe was looking up for us to see if he could see those additional parking spaces that Mr. Fleer talked about. And I don't know if, if you haven't found them, we can just put that as a condition as number six. If you haven't?
I don't, I, I don't think I had the most current plans in the file, Tom. So go ahead and make it a condition. I know there, there is some excess parking shown on that plan, but I don't think I have the current plan in the file.
Isn't that it right there?
There, there was two areas that I seen on the plans. Is there, are there more than two areas?
No, we didn't want more than two areas. Because remember, though, these are sing, these are single-family homes.
I think there was one right, right here, right at the cursor.
Yep, and right up above. Keep going up. Do you see it right here?
Right there.
Yep. I think that's sufficient. So I think it's on the?
That's fine then.
What about way out here on the other end? Let me go out his house and no additional parking.
You don't, remember, we talked about that though, Ron? Because we had this discussion about the police and the ability for people to park temporarily on the street if they're having families over.
Okay, so I, I have a question about that. If there's that many homes and Christmas holidays, how many cars are they going to park along the road? I mean?
It happens every year in my neighborhood. Not everybody, not every single home has everybody and their family at their house. Other people go to some people's houses, other people come to your house. The, the point is, you're taking away a lot or taking away development for parking. I wouldn't want, if I lived right next to a parking lot, people are just going to use that to park cars in extra spaces. I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't want to have just random parking throughout a neighborhood. And I live in a neighborhood. I, I think, I think you're over-exaggerating the need for multiple. I think there's two, if you really need it. You also have the ability to call the police and park on street temporarily. I, I think it's more than sufficient, but that's my opinion.
My estimation, there's just too many houses put on too small of a lots.
Well, that's a whole other issue. We understand that's how you do.
That's just too many homes. Two hundred and thirty-nine homes on what, forty-five acres?
We, that's a totally different issue.
That's what a PRD is.
Yeah, you have every right to vote now.
It appears this drawing does show those parking spaces we talked about.
Right.
One other thing, on item one, I think where we said the township may be, uses the township deemed necessary for any purpose, I think it should say relating to traffic impact mitigation. That's what that impact fee has to do with traffic. I mean, it shouldn't be for parks, it shouldn't be for anything but mitigation, whether it's on Fifty at the four-lane highway, at the underpass on Rising Road and the railroad, on, um, um, what's it called? What's the road that goes underneath?
Creedmore.
Creedmore, improvements there. But e, either way, the development is making an impact on traffic. That's the biggest issue for even all the neighbors above it. So I think that when they're giving that money, it's, it, it should be towards some kind of impact mitigation on the traffic.
I'm fine. So amending number one to say for traffic, for, for any purpose related to traffic mitigation.
Traffic impact mitigation.
Right. Is that a motion, is that in the form of a motion? You're making a motion to approve this?
Yes.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No.
I couldn't hear it. Darlene said no. Ron, you said yes?
I said yeah.
Frank, you said?
Was that on just the amended motion on item one?
No, this is for the whole thing.
Whole resolution, no.
Okay, so three, two. One eighty-one, twenty twenty-two. Consider authorizing the Cecil Township Historical Society to raise money and accept donations for the restoration of the Cecil Jail. They are working towards, um, ret, or not renovating, restoring the jail that's been in that location for a really long time. We're working through the process of getting a deed so they can own, so they can own it. But while that process is going on, we want to give them the opportunity to raise money and get to work, and, and I think it's a really awesome thing they're doing. So this motion just allows them, allows us to retain ownership, but allows to fundraise for the purposes of redoing that jail, which is super cool.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Passes five, zero. One eighty-two, twenty twenty-two. Consider amendments to the Cecil Township Fire Code originally adopted by Fire Ordinance twelve, twenty sixteen on October third, twenty sixteen. Whoops, see, if we would have just run there, we would have known the date. Officially adopting the twenty fifteen edition of the International Fire Code with removal of section D one oh seven regarding one or two family residential developments where the number of dwelling units exceeds thirty shall be provided with two separate and approved fire apparatus access roads and the removal of section D one oh three point four regarding dead-end apparatus access roads in excess of a hundred and fifty feet and turnaround whiffs. And the removal and amendment of section A one oh three point one regarding general administration powers and the removal amendment of section A one oh three point two regarding appointment of a new fire code official by the fire chief.
I'd like to make some comments or ask some questions, more or less. I'd like to make some comments or ask some questions, more or less.
Go ahead.
That first one, removal of section D one oh seven?
Mm-hmm.
What will be the new number of units be, if any?
It's at our discretion. So if we want to make everybody that comes forward have two entrances and two exits, then we can do that.
So in other words, in other words, what industry standard or study would, was utilized to determine if the new number is going to be? So in other words, we make that upon whenever they come in?
It's kind of like what I just explained, Darlene, like Cool Valley, oh, sorry, Cool Valley, they came to us. Under this current ordinance, we couldn't approve their plan because there aren't two fully functioning entrances and exits. We don't want to turn away a whole development like Cool Valley because of this one little section of the code. We are working with them to come up with the absolute best that we can as far as entrances and exits goes, but we have that flexibility and ability to work with them to make those adjustments. It's the same with Silver Creek. We, the topography was very difficult there. It would have been very difficult to have two full entrances and exits. We worked with them to come up with what we can. I can't speak for everyone, but I believe the intent of this board is to make sure we have those entrances and exits. But this gives us the flexibility to make, make those adjustments as we need to going forward. And we can, we now have a fire chief in place, and we can rely on him and our engineers to come up with the best for, for every situation. Tom said it best, like this works great in areas where it's flat and perfectly level. We don't live there, so it doesn't work that well for us.
So we're going to have a meeting with Cool Valley to really earn more?
We have, we set the conditional use hearing for September nineteenth.
But they did find one, they do have one.
Yes.
An emergency access in their plan already.
When we go through the conditional use hearing, if that is something that's super important to you, then we make that a condition as part of the conditional use hearing. Okay. Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Maybe I can refer this to Mac. In a cul-de-sac, how much room do you need to turn a truck? Like our standard cul-de-sacs usually eighty feet across. Is that enough room?
It depends on the size. And, you know, something, Frank, it's kind of, kind of like the, in, actually, the fire department, and I believe the board, is always going to strive to have as big a cul-de-sac as possible.
Because most places, you go everywhere, standard one is eighty feet across. I mean, very rarely are they larger than that. I just want to know, is that usually enough room for a?
I, I can't just come out and say yes with every piece of fire apparatus. But yeah, I, I, you know, whether it's Cool Valley or any of the other proposed plans, we're going to look at those cul-de-sacs and make them as big as possible. About to get back to Darlene's issue, but we're going to look and say, look, we, the fire department wants a second exit. We want as large of an area as possible for us, you know. Can I give you an exact number? No, I can't. Depends on the size of the apparatus.
Maybe try one of them out, let us know. One of our cul-de-sacs.
You can take Frank for a ride.
Unless there's somebody parked in, in the cul-de-sac in a circle. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, Darlene? Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No.
Four, one. We're going to table one eighty-three, twenty twenty-two. We thought the settlement agreement would be further along at this point, but it is not ready to be voted on at this, right now. One eighty-four, twenty twenty-two. Consider authorizing gate-
But you can move if you're going to table it.
We're not tabling it. It's just, it's off the agenda for now. One eighty-four, twenty twenty-two. Consider authorizing gateway engineers to repair and solicit for bids for the installation of a stormwater pipe along Wingcrest Drive as set forth in the above settlement agreement upon receipt of fully executed settlement agreement.
Right, so the little bit of background on this one is that the, the settlement agreement in the Durbin matter, which again, you have insurance counsel who is managing that case, but the settlement agreement, as you're all aware, will include some kind of specific performance by the township, very similar to the specific performance that was offered many years ago. To do that, obviously, it would have to be bid out. And the purpose of this particular motion is just to allow Dan to, time is of the essence, our understanding from the plaintiffs. So this allows Dan to at least get that, those bid documents ready. So when that settlement agreement is ready, and you all vote on it, and it's fully executed, then you can go ahead and, and bid out that portion of the project.
Any other?
So nothing would be, nothing would happen formally, nothing would be bid until that settlement agreement is fully executed. To prepare and solicit for bids, yes.
Solicit for bids, and we're going to get bids, but we won't award.
He will, once there's a fully executed settlement agreement, he can then solicit for the bids. But right now, he can start getting those documents ready.
We won't have to come back to it to solicit. He can have them prepared and then put them out as soon as it passes.
Correct.
When are we going to get the settle, the settlement agreement?
We're hoping soon. My understanding is that your counsel is, is working with, I think all the defendants might be on board at this point, and then they have to finish negotiating with the plaintiffs. So I would, if I'm guessing, which I hate to do, I would say within a week or two.
Being that this was back in two thousand fourteen when it started?
It's an old case, Darlene. Yes.
Oh, geez.
Been a long time. And it's funny, because we're actually back to the exact same agreement that we offered to them in two thousand fourteen, and they wouldn't accept.
But how much money has it cost us to just linger this on?
Well, it's not us, though. We offered it. We were willing to move forward in the, the, I don't want to say their names.
You, you do have insurance coverage for this case.
Yeah.
So your, your counsel, it's probably, you know, it's insurance counsel that was selected and being given.
So we're not going to do anything until we know exactly what, how much money is going to be involved for this settlement agreement.
The township is not offering any money. The township is only offering this specific performance piece. And I did circulate that to you all, so at least you can see what it's going to look like. I don't anticipate that piece to change much at all. But it's just not ready in final form to come to you to really approve.
So moved.
I'll second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I'm staying.
Four and one abstention. One eighty-five, twenty twenty-two. Consider certification of the twenty twenty-two MMO for the Uniform Pension Plan at six hundred fifty-nine thousand, twenty-six dollars. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five, zero. One eighty-six, twenty twenty-two. Consider certification of the twenty twenty-two MMO for the Non-Uniform Pension Plan at three hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Five, zero. One eighty-seven, twenty twenty-two. Consider the Board of Supervisors' minutes from the Monday, August first, twenty twenty-two, regular monthly meeting.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Five, zero. One eighty-eight, twenty twenty-two. Consider the general fund invoices from August first through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five, zero. Any, anything the board wants to bring up that didn't get discussed during the meeting? Okay, moving on to citizens' general comments and questions. Anybody have a comment or question of something that didn't appear on the agenda? If you just stepped to the microphone and, it's a race. We'll get to you.
Okay. Kenny Strain, forty twenty-two, Sir James Dry. My question is, at the last supervisors' meeting, there was, I don't know if I would call it a commitment, but there was a, going to be an update about North DePauli Road, about what the current situation is, about how soon something's going to happen there. I will say one thing. Well, Bill and Matt, those guys did a fantastic job.
That's Mark.
Or Mark, I'm sorry. He's been called worse.
I'm sure.
But they did an awesome job of putting that drain down here.
They did a very nice job.
Yeah, they did a fan, and a lot of that water that's coming down that hill is now going in there. The thing is very professional looking. But that's my question, Ms. Fisher, about, and the rest of you guys, about what is the status of North DePauli Road?
For that, or Dawn?
We talked about this at the last meeting and said, we'll give you guys some kind of definitive answer.
We are actively working on it. The scope of the project changed from the original request, and we are working with Range to get essentially them to approve more money, which they are trying to do, for us to do the full project and not, excuse my language, half-ass it.
What's next, Joe LeWall?
And they've been, they've been good. So we're just waiting for that. It's not going to get done this fall, unfortunately. I know. But it's, it's like that decision about whether or not you-
Well, the scope has changed, I'm sure, from the original.
Significantly from the original project.
Because originally, they thought they were going to start this project in the early spring. Here we are in the fall, and it's still, so.
Go ahead, Joe.
Well, let me add to this. We've had some complications in the process of getting the easements. Lenny Desmond died. I just talked with his attorney on, a week ago Friday, and received the signed easement agreement last week, edited so that the executor could sign it, then it'll be forwarded to the township. I have the other easement for the, the corner property. Gretchen, you have that to review. Once I get that back from you, I'll get that executed. I've got a verbal agreement on that one. And I also have a verbal agreement on the Isky property for the wall that's proposed there, so we're removing along.
We're moving.
We're moving along. We're not sitting.
We're not, yeah, we're not sitting on our hands.
No, I, I don't doubt that. I just wonder if you guys had some idea about when you're going to make that decision.
Not fast.
Huh?
Yeah, it wasn't fast.
The easement should have been done a year ago.
Yeah.
Well, we, we, we did, we did.
When Lenny was living.
We did, we had, we had a handshake with him. Bill and I were out there, had a handshake with Lenny Desmond. And then he took ill after that and was, was in, we could not get in contact with him to sign any paperwork. And I mailed the paperwork to him, certified mail, and I got the green card back, but, and even gave him a self-addressed stamped envelope to mail it back, but never returned it.
Yeah, we are, we are working on it.
Well, I believe you.
Believe me, we, it, we want it to move forward just as much as you do. We want to put a bell on this and move on.
I understand that the plan's specs are complete, boy, and why wouldn't you say that? For the project to be accomplished in the spring, but there's still, there's still, as we told you before, maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah, that pole.
Quite frankly, there is, there is very limited space for them to do that type of change. Lead in that line for them to move anyways. So Joe and I looked at this, we looked at this last week, and we were right after the, uh, Joe and I were back out there, and that driveway approach comes, they're going to move it towards the apartment. Doesn't really do much as far as widening that road very much. The ideal, and I know the property owner's not, not agreeable to this, but ideally, what I'd like to do, and I've discussed this with them, not on board with it, and Joe and I looked at it, is to have that driveway approach that North DePauli Road at a ninety-degree intersection. Instead of up around like this, come out and make an intersection. Right. Including the ready, it's looking left and right coming out of the driveway. I don't, I'm not on board with where that driveway's going to remain. I really am not. One of the problems that we have with that also is this rising pole. There's no room to move it. There's no place to put it, you know. With, with, with that revision to that driveway, that would give us some room to, to, to place that pole. It would actually be in that driveway where it's currently located. So there's, there's still some issues out there, sight distance issues out there. One of my concerns is this. If we agree with the property owner to leave that driveway where it's approximately situated right now, and move it closer to the wall, the fact that we're actually moving it closer to the wall implicates us as far as the sight distance is concerned. Because it does not meet the sight distance then for an approach on that roadway. It does not. We've been out there, we looked at it, and the sight distance is out there. The only way you can, there's no way that you can relocate that driveway, have it comply with our current standards. And once you move it, it's not going to work. So again, Joe and I discussed this last week. The ideal situation would be to relocate that driveway, have it approach the North DePauli Road, at the ninety-degree intersection to the road. That way, the progress would take this into the road. They would have. So again, it's a multi-faceted issue, driveway location, and the pole that sits within the central feeder at the right of that.
Okay, well, there's, then there's other circumstances that you guys are having to deal with. It wasn't part of the original, when they looked at it originally. It's just getting worse and worse on it.
We're going to do this, we're going to put the money into this thing, let's do it right.
Oh, amen. I agree. Okay. All right. Well, thank you.
We're going to be involved in it also as far as relocation of the driveway. We're going to be involved in it also as far as relocation of the driveway, that relocation does not adhere to the current sight distance standards that we, that we imparted by the office.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Cindy, I have one question, did you say that you were waiting to see if we can get more money from Range to do so, in regard to what?
They, they are, I don't want to say responsible for, they have agreed to give more money, or give money for the relocation of that road, or for some work along that road, I have reached out to our contact, and she's working towards some additional funds for that.
Okay, the other thing is, and we've been kicking the can down the road on this, about recognizing Jason and Range for the fourteen thousand dollar grant, we'll never bring him in front of the board and?
I asked them about that, it wasn't coordination on our part, it was coordination between Jason's office and Range, so they, we did that post that was shared between Jason and Range and the township, what was it, like two weeks ago, Bill? I forget. Two or three weeks ago, at the request of their offices. It wasn't us, we, we had planned to have them here when, Jack, May.
Back in April?
Yeah, in May, and then Jason couldn't come, and then Range couldn't come, like it wasn't, we've opened the door every meeting.
I mean, the reason I'm asking this is because every time I pick up the paper, Range Resources giving somebody money, and they're there with a big check and so on, I have yet to see them do that here.
Well, we did better than post the check, we actually posted the pictures of the swings and the actual part.
Well, I did, I carried on with that also, but I'm saying that it's still, there wasn't any observer and reporter or anything like that, and I do, there's a big thanks goes out to Range Resources for everything that they've contributed to the parks and rec. I don't think that our parks and rec would be doing as well, or have all the monies that they've been, that Range contributes to.
I'm doing me wrong, I'm grateful to Range, but I think it's undercutting our parks and rec a little bit to say that we owe them.
Oh, hey, no, I'm not undercutting their parks and rec, they do a fantastic job, I've attended everything that they have done, even the, even the things that are, the last, the Shetland Rodeo, unbelievable, those little kids.
Well, that wasn't parks and rec.
I know.
Just for clarification, that was not a parks and rec organized function.
I know it wasn't, but it was unbelievable, those kids were really something.
That was organized by someone in Fort Cherry, that's different, anyways, yeah, it wasn't that we shunned them or told them not to come, we just couldn't coordinate when to have them here.
Okay.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead, sorry, you had a.
I'm Nancy Marshall, 45, Tomahawk Claim Lane. You were handed three pieces of paper earlier, it's a report that I put together for you. When I was here at the last meeting, at the end of the meeting, I spoke to Cindy, who indicated that you're going to be developing a comprehensive plan for Cecil Township, and she.
That meeting?
At, next week.
No, February, September 12, yes.
Right, right, that's next week.
Yep.
Right, right. In preparation for that, she encouraged me to solicit my neighbors about our opinions. So the petition was, because we want to maintain the rural feel of the rising neighborhood, we ask Cecil Township to require new homes be built on lots of the following sizes, and everyone is given a choice of one, three, or five acres. This reflects the individual choices, if you turn to the third page of the report, you'll see that altogether, seventy-five people were voting, sixteen or twenty-one percent wanted one acre, thirty people or forty percent wanted three acres, and twenty-nine people or thirty-eight percent said they wanted five acres, that is, for every plot. I mean, I know there's nothing, there's nothing that we can do to stop the Silver Creek, we're just not real happy about it, and we'd like to, further north on the road, try and keep it as rural as we can.
I wouldn't, we have this report, it was given to every board member, I would encourage you, if you can, to come to the meeting on the 12th.
Right.
Because that would be the right format to bring that up there.
See you then.
The problem is, developers can't develop property like that.
I beg your pardon?
Developers can't develop property with them sized lots.
I know.
Well, then why would we do that, chase developers away?
We're not, we're not excited about having developers come in, we loved the fact that when Mr. Kemp sold his property, he sold ten-acre lots, we thought, we think those are beautiful homes there.
But it's everybody's right to sell their property.
A whole lot of us moved out to that area because we like that rural feel. We don't want it ruined by more and more developments.
You have to understand, though, you have to understand that we're constrained by some laws, like through the MPC and the Second Class Township Code, Peters Township tried that years ago, that they tried to adopt an ordinance that said that, well, minimize lots, I think they were trying to push for two acres, all the proprietors got together and they sued the council, and they were ordered to undo that ordinance, I think now the maximum, or minimum size is half acre in their ordinance in Peters Township, but they tried to make them bigger, and the law just will not allow that.
No, I, but it's half acre, which is significantly different.
You're right.
Significantly different than what we're seeing in, on the Silver Creek.
There are a lot of developers here that you look at Silver Creek, they're what, they're not even older.
Yeah, right, we can't even describe how small they are, okay, see you next Monday.
Kara Schurden, 58, North DePauli, I have more of an observation than a question, per se, and I don't have an answer to the question, I like to usually have some sort of an idea of a solution, but I don't know the solution, but I just wanted to bring up that regarding item 178-2022, there were concerns brought up about potential environmental pollutants, and I would just ask that, we've had many issues in the past involving environmental pollutants, with issues, with situations such as drilling with Range Resources, with conversations around the ABB property, and we don't seem to have a standardized way to inquire about the environmental pollutants, and I would ask that equal consideration be given to people who live, say, on North DePauli Road near a well pad, as is given to people who live on Klinger Road. I'm just making a statement that it doesn't seem that all parties are created equal when we are, say, being concerned about environmental pollutants. I don't know what the answer is, but I'd ask for consideration in that space going forward.
I hear what you're saying, and I don't disagree with what you're saying at all, in fact, I agree with it, but just for clarification one more time, there are no environmental pollutants that we know of today on the property on Klinger Road that we're building, our public works building on, it is absolutely in no way comparable to a drill site, it is in absolute, absolutely no way comparable to what we found when we did drilling and bore testing at ABB. So I don't want people to leave this meeting room, or people that are watching out on the interweb, to go and say, they did the exact same thing on Klinger Road that they could have had on ABB, that could not be farther from the truth, the only thing that we've encountered as of right now on Klinger Road is pyrite, which is easily contained, it's everywhere, it's probably in your backyard, it is, it is easily contained by certain construction methods, and so I agree with you, I think that we need air monitoring, I think we need water monitoring, I think we need various things, but I don't think they're warranted at Klinger, so.
Okay, can I reiterate on that a little bit?
Please.
They had air monitoring, they had noise monitoring, they had everything up on North DePauli Road.
Incorrect.
So we want now some air monitoring, maybe on Klinger Road.
So that's, that's actually not, yeah, that's actually not true, they, they had noise monitoring at their own expense, they had air monitoring at their own expense, and they have water testing at the beginning and then, look, I bit my tongue.
So Range did most of that.
It's a self-policing situation, which is the issue.
Yeah.
It needs to go into the conditions that were written into the last several, the ordinance needs to be changed, for third-party, independent, accountable to the Board of Supervisors, air, water, and noise monitoring, and that's still not done, we're still having to write those conditions into every individual thing that happens, it needs to be updated in the ordinance, and it also needs to be taken care of in other situations where we know there are known contaminants on properties outside of drilling, like aside from drilling, there needs to be some sort of process to make sure that the public is protected, so I don't think we should just, you know, I don't know what the answer is, like I said, there has to be some sort of, you know, inventory of where these known contaminants are, and making sure that we have a process for going through and making sure people are protected if we're unearthing these lands that have been covered over for some period of time, that's my point.
Also, the DEP was up on Klinger Road, they were on site, and they issued all the permits, correct, Joe? And they didn't find nothing?
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's totally, that's great to know, and that definitely helps a lot, it's just, when things like this come up, you know, we're not handling it in a consistent manner, so let's be concerned for all the residents in every part of the township.
Not just the people, not just when you own a house on that street.
Correct.
Yeah, gotcha. Anybody else? Okay, this, I timeout, we need, and we need, yes, I'm going to make that, and then we need a very brief, less than five-minute executive session, also quickly, 182-2022, Carol for the record needs to say, consider amendments to the Cecil Township Fire Code, ordinance number six.
What's the executive session?
It's related to Moeney Road, Dawn and I had a call with the DEP, it will literally take less than five minutes, I just need you for five minutes, because we're under a time constraint.